All right, let's go. All right, the meeting will come to order at 7:56. We have two matters on our agenda, both involving TERRASOM. But before we actually start, I wanted to explain for those that might not know, I understand there's a solar project at issue here, but many folks don't know that Vermont law, Vermont statutory law, gives the Public Utilities Commission, formerly known as the Public Service Board, exclusive jurisdiction over energy production facilities, energy transmission facilities, including solar facilities. So, local municipal boards, zoning boards have nothing to say about the citing of solar power. It's exclusively, the PUC's jurisdiction in this project already has a certificate of public good from the Public Utility Commission. There is one caveat to what I just said, and that is, as a result of a statutory change in 2015, the legislature allow, authorized towns to implement through zoning, solar citing, solar screening standards, but those standards could not be any more restrictive than screening standards for other commercial uses. And if a town adopted those type of solar screening standards, it would not create any authority for the local zoning board. It would give the town select board something to talk about before the Public Utility Commission as part of the town's right to talk about the impact of the project on orderly development. That being said, the town of Bristol does not have any such standards in its zoning bylaws, which were enacted, adopted in 2017. So, you know, this meeting has more attending than usual. I anticipate that some people are attending because they're interested one way or the other about the solar power aspects of the use that's on the property. But I just want you to be aware upfront that this board doesn't have any authority to deal, to do anything about the project with respect to solar. The issues are whether the existing applicant, the existing conditional use permit can be amended to reduce the parking. And there's a procedural issue that comes before that about whether or not the zoning administrator could rescind his decision on October 5th, whether he could rescind the August 21 letter that he issued to the applicant. So, that's, analytically, that one comes first. So, we'll do that one first. But before I get there, there is another issue I want everyone to be aware of. I'm frequently, although not exclusively, attorney for the town of Bristol. Things come before me regularly. I think I'm the, fair to say, I'm the primary attorney for the town at this point. And I did have involvement on this case, or this issue, when things bubbled up, when the project started to go in and folks were upset. I did not participate in the substance of the, or read anything related to the substance of it, but I became aware and wasn't consulted by the town administrator, Valerie, about the issue of Chris's, Chris Pearlie's, letter of August 21, 2020, which he cited the deemed approval statute. It was my advice as to Chris to rescind that letter and hold a hearing, because a hearing has, because a hearing has to be held. He had no authority to issue that letter in the absence of a hearing. The deemed approval remedy does not apply unless there's been a hearing. For those who, I know that's a little bit of nomenclature, there's a remedy in the state statutes that says if a zoning board has 45 days to render a decision after the, after the hearing is complete. And if it doesn't do that, then the, then the matter before the ZBA is quote unquote deemed approved. So, that was an error, and it was my advice to rescind that letter. I've also received several communications from various private parties that I was copied on. I have not, I did not read them because they're ex parte communication. I could see the subject line, I knew what it, to see what it was about, but I didn't weigh in at all on that. So, I give you that background because I think it's, I'm required to do that. There's a concern that I should be recused because of what I've just explained. I will recuse myself. If that happens, there is no quorum. So, that's the best, that's the best I can say about that.
Kevin, did you just recuse yourself, or you're saying?
No, I didn't. No, I don't have any, no, I don't think I need to. I did not weigh in on the merits. It was purely procedural. And I can go ahead, and I can understand that somebody feels differently, and that's their prerogative. Okay, hearing, hearing nothing further on that, we'll proceed to the first item, and that is 3B, as in, on the agenda. So, the first issue is whether or not the decision to, the October 5th letter, rescission letter is proper, or is the, is the application of TERRASOM already deemed approved? My view on that is, well, Jim, do you want to, you want to speak to that first, since you're the appellant?
We are not asking for the chairman's recusal. I understand the town has an attorney in this matter, and it's not Kevin. It's Joe McLean. So, in this proceeding, Joe McLean is acting as the zoning board's attorney, and the town's attorney. So, I see no need to accuse.
And do you want to explain your position on the appeal, your appeal of Chris's October 5th rescission?
Yes. The Supreme Court of Vermont has said over and over again that once a permit is issued, it cannot be challenged once the appeal period expires. The appeal period expired months ago. The letter that's been referred to actually was a decision. The email that was sent to Mr. Gale said enclosed is our decision, spelled out, P-E-C-I-S-I-O-N. It was a decision. The decision itself stated that it was setting forth findings of fact. It set forth the findings of fact. The decision stated, based on the findings of fact, TERRASOM's application to amend its permit was granted. That was a decision. It was not appealed. I do not agree with the chairman's characterization of the issue before you right now. The issue before you right now is not whether the deemed approval statute applies. The issue before you right now is whether you're going to break state law and a string of Supreme Court precedents, which clearly hold that once the decision is issued, once the appeal period expires, it cannot be challenged. It's illegal. Now, as to whether or not Mr. Pearlie was correct in issuing the decision, that is not the issue before you right now. It's too late to argue that. And there are two sides to the argument. It's the statute that applies is not just, is not the statute about an approval being deemed to have been issued 45 days after a hearing closes, a zoning board hearing closes. There are two other statutes and the zoning ordinance itself. And, for example, section 4448 of Title 24 says that when, within a set period of time, the zoning administrator must take certain action on an application. If the application, if the action is not taken by the zoning administrator within that time period, the application is deemed approved. As far as TERRASOM understood at the time, the decision was issued, the time period had long since passed. And the, by law, the permit was deemed approved because there had been no action on it by the zoning administrator. Whether we were right or wrong, the decision was issued and it was not appealed. So, the issue before the zoning board right now is whether to uphold state law and state that it's too late to challenge the permit that was issued on, in August. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. You make, you make a fair point. I was conflating issues that, I understand it's not just a question of the deemed approval statute. My view is that the exclusive remedy provision of time for timely appeal doesn't apply here, does not apply here because the town, in this instance, that statute refers to the exclusive remedy of an interested person as a time, is a timely appeal. And the interested person for a municipality is defined as when there's a bylaw in issue, or the town plan is in issue, and under state Supreme Court precedents, there is no bylaw in issue here. Also, the, there are several cases that recognize that appeal notice has to be included in a decision in order for potentially interested persons to have due process notice of their right to appeal. And that, that wasn't the case. So, that, that's the, I understand there's a, there is a fair, fairly joined legal arguments on both sides of this one. And does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant or on this one, or if you want to address your, if you didn't understand, because it's a lot of legalese that Jim and I are batting back and forth here. If you have some question of Jim Dumont, that's, that's fine as well. And, and once we're done with any board questions, I'll, we'll open, open it up to members of the public. So, let's start with the board first. Any questions for, on this, on this procedural aspect?
Kevin, I didn't understand your argument. I think I understood Jim's, but what were you saying is the reason that Jim is wrong? Could you explain it less?
Yeah. So, the, the state statutes that say that you have to, your only remedy is a timely appeal to the environmental court are limited to the, to interested persons, which is a, that interested persons are bound by the exclusive remedy provision. Interested persons are, is a statutorily defined term with respect to municipalities. An interested person is, is the town when the meaning of a bylaw or the propriety of the adoption of a bylaw is in issue. So, in most cases, the town, the town, it's really about the application of a bylaw to the facts. It's not about whether the bylaw is a proper bylaw for some, for some reason. So, my point was that we, the town is not, even though more than 30 days had passed since the August 21st letter that Chris Pearlie wrote, he could still rescind his letter on August, October 5th. And there were other problems with that August, August 21st letter, one of which was, it did not carry with it a notification of the appeal rights, which, to the environmental court. So, that, that in and of itself is problematic. So, is it, is this a messy one? You bet it is. No doubt about it. My thought is it's best to get to the merits, and if the, if the applicant amendment is approved, this procedural brouhaha becomes moot. But it's a, it's a fair issue. It's a fairly debated, debatable issue under the circumstances. So, if the, if the rescission, if the board decides that the October 5th rescission was unwarranted, improper, illegal, then the Chris's August 21st letter stands. So, so that's why we addressed it first. If the rescission decides that the rescission was appropriate, then, then we go on to the merits of the application or an amendment to the conditional use permit itself.
If I can say something?
Conditional use permits. That's what's being amended here. The conditional use permit from, I think it's 2012. And, you know, the zoning, ZBA is the only board, is the only entity that can make a conditional use determination. The zoning administrator never has authority for that. Now, I understand the point that Jim is making in his head, so he can make it if he wants. But are there any other questions from the board?
I have a comment. And that is, it sounds like our zoning administrator made a mistake.
Yes.
Is not, that is not unheard of. If you look down West Street, there's a very large canopy over the Jolly's gas pumps, which the board told them that they should, should not be there. And suddenly, they had a permit, and there was a canopy. This does happen. It does not seem that if someone wishes to know about appeals and that sort, it's in the zoning regulations, which are online, which are available to everybody who has a computer, which is most people. And it seems that there was a mistake made. It does not seem like it will be the end of the world because it doesn't look like they have ever used the number of even the eight parking spaces that they will still have. And it does not seem fair at this point to change, well, change horses in the middle of the street, so to speak.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we, we'll give Jim a chance to respond first, then we'll go to the question, any comments or questions from the public? We do have to keep the, we do have to keep the issues separate. The issue right now is whether or not we're, we're going to consider whether or not the rescission of the August 21st letter, which was a mistake. There's, everybody recognized that. It was an honest, good faith mistake. Just, you know, it happens. It doesn't, not malicious, it happened. Not the first time, won't be the last time for, for any of us. But here we are. So, Ted or Carol, any questions or comments on that?
No, I don't have.
All right. So, now we're, Jim, do you want to respond to?
Sure. I agree with what Kevin just said. It was a mistake. We're all human. We all make mistakes. I make a lot of mistakes every day. So, Mr. Pearlie, don't take it personally. The fact is, construction started, and it wouldn't be fair, and it would be a hardship to continue the halt that we voluntarily agreed to any longer. As a courtesy to the town, and to try and keep legal expenses down for everybody, TERRASOM agreed, even though they didn't accept the letter, they don't accept the rescission. They said, let's just put everything on hold until we can get a prompt zoning hearing. And so, there has, construction has ceased, but it needs to start up again. And as some of you may know, in the zoning statutes, the situation that Ms. Tilburg talked about is actually recognized in the statutes, because we're all human and zoning administrators, you know, there's so much on your plate. You know, you're not going to get everything right all the time. So, the statutes actually say, if the zoning administrator issues a permit that shouldn't have been issued, it's legal, and then in the future, it's treated as a non-conforming use, or a non-conforming structure, as the case may be. So, this is not uncommon. The statutes deal with it. My view is that the decision was a decision that stands. You could rationalize the decision by the zoning board right now not to reverse it by saying, the zoning statutes deal with this anyway. If you could use it as a non-conforming use, or you could accept Kevin's point and say, well, this appeal period's going to apply to the town because the town's not an interested person. But in response to that, I would say, this gets really into the technical legalese jargon, but, for which I apologize. But as Kevin knows, Vermont operates under what's called Dillon's Rule. D-I-L-L-O-N apostrophe S, Dillon's Rule.
It's not Bob Dylan?
Not Bob Dylan.
Oh, okay. I always thought it was.
No. It goes back over 100 years, and the Vermont Supreme Court has made it clear we follow Dillon's Rule. And the Dillon's Rule says that because Vermont is not a home rule state, any power that a municipality exercises has to be laid out for it specifically in statute. You know, home rule state, a home rule state is a state where the state constitution says that municipalities have inherent authority. I believe Massachusetts is a home rule state, for example. Vermont is not a home rule state. And so, under Dillon's Rule, if there isn't specific authority for a town to do X or Y, then the town can't do X or Y. The legislature has to authorize it. And I'm not aware of any authority in the zoning statutes or any other statutes that allow the town to issue a zoning permit and then rescind it. The legislature said those who want to challenge a zoning permit have to appeal it. And that's the statute we've been talking about, 4472, when you have to appeal it within the appeal period. So, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
So, any further questions from the board of the applicant or Jim Dumont?
No.
Okay. So, we're going to open it up now to members of the public who are attending. I'm going to ask that, most of you I cannot see, and I'm going to ask that you identify yourself, and I'll recognize you. And we're going to need to know where you live. So, because there are part of the definition of interested persons is, is, is where you live in proximity to the process, to the project. But it's, this is a public hearing. So, whether or not, even if, whether or not you live in Bristol, you can ask a question or make a comment. So, everybody gets to say their piece. But we will ask you to identify yourself and tell us, tell us where you live. So, does anybody have a question on this, this procedural issue? Katie?
Katie Raffmeyer, 21 North Street. My question goes back to the issue of appeal. And I'm not going to be able to phrase the question in the same, based on the same statutes that you were in the laws that you were, because I'm not an attorney. But my understanding was any, any project, any development needed to have a, some sort of posting, some sort of notification that it was starting so that people were aware of it. So, how, how are, how is anyone supposed to know that there's something to appeal if they don't know it's happening? And so, I would, I would really like the answer to that question. I mean, anybody who does anything needs to post something. Being a zoning administrator myself and on the planning commission, but I'm speaking as a resident, I would like an answer to that question.
Do you want me to respond?
I'd kind of like Kevin to respond.
Well, I, no, I think that's a, I think that, that's a, Jim, I'll give you a shot at, response, I shouldn't say shot, after, no, that was part of the point I was making, making Katie, is that in, in one of the errors of, or one of the consequences of that error in, of August 21, is exactly that, is that there is no notice to, to anyone there. And because, and because the conditional use application amendment was an application to amend the existing conditional use permit, which is not a decision that the ZA can make, it's, yeah, he has to refer to the ZBA. You don't end up with a posting placard like you do with a building permit out on the street for 15 days that people see, and if they want to know what's going on, they can look. That, that avenue of procedure didn't get triggered here, appropriately so, because this is a conditional use application amendment that, and that's a decision for the ZBA. You don't have the placard on the street like you do with a building permit. And so, you know, yes, that's one of the problems that, one of the issues that I'm, that I was alluding to. And so, that's my response to your question. Jim, do you want to?
Okay. Well, I just wanted to follow up, because I was, I was, just wanted to clarify that that's what you were saying, because that
Yes.
I didn't interpret it as I should have. I was aware of that, having been involved with the previous conditional use permit. And so, I knew this was happening. So, I actually did bring this up with Chris, saying that my understanding was it would need an amendment. So, I was surprised that it proceeded in the way that it did. So, I don't look at it as just, we all make mistakes. I think that this is something that should have been done more carefully, and we just don't say, it was a mistake. Okay, let's move on. I know that there's probably nothing we can do. I know there's nothing we can do about the solar project, but there's a process. And we don't want to just, in Bristol, be zoning by default because we make a mistake. Well, let's just let it be a non-conforming, a non-conforming whatever. So, that's happened before in Bristol, and people complain about it. And we just need to be more careful. And I think, so, that's my, my point there. I did have another question. I did have another question about the warning of this meeting, which was not the full 15 days. And I was confused about that as well. And I asked about that and I was told, oh, it's not a fatal flaw. Well, what does that mean? And is it not necessary to warn meetings for a full 15 period? And so a lot of confusing things.
Yeah, no, that's
hear good responses to that.
All right, I'll, I'll address your, your last question or point there. You're right that we did not end up with the full 15 days here because of the usual complexity of the procedural posture of the case. And the fact that Terrasum stopped work that was already in place. Jim brought legal issues to the town. We needed to have, we felt it was important to get to the issues as quickly as possible. And now that the independent is a once a week paper, the decision was made to, to go forward on the 27th if we could get a quorum. And we would take the, at public notice was, was made. But we took the extra step, the town, I shouldn't say we, the town took the extra step. And, and this was, I think, in conjunction with Joe, was my, was not my advice. I was not participating further at that point. At that point, Joe was, Joe McClain was in for the town and was in dialogue with Jim Dumont on this. But the decision was made to make, or go the extra step to make sure that those people, the joiners, those would be interested, potentially interested persons got actual notice by a certified mail. And, and, and I don't know, how many went out, Chris? Six or seven. And but we got certified, the town received certified mail return receipts from everyone. So again, you know, not perfect. But we made sure that the people who were potentially impacted the most and had the most reason to speak about the project that they received actual notice. So that was the decision made to make the, the, I think was a, a fair balance under the circumstances of Terrasum's need to resume in a, in a timely fashion, as quickly as possible, rather than have in, in terminable delay, as long as we took that, I shouldn't say in terminable, that's a bad adjective. Rather have additional delay. Given that we provide actual notice through certified mail to people who were really potentially impacted the most and, and they could show up. And, and if, if they're here, then, well, they received notice, anybody, you know, so it's, if you're here and participating, the 15 day issue isn't, isn't going to be a problem as far as a court would be concerned. Jim, do you want to add anything to, in response to Kate, Katie Raycroft's question?
No, I think you've covered it.
Okay. Anything further, Katie, or if you like? I, I understand you're not going to necessarily agree, but I hope that answers the question as, as directly as, as possible.
I do have another question. So if you're, if the ZBA decides to reverse its original decision to rescind the permit, will you still move forward and do the amended?
Yeah, that would be next.
Okay, that's
Right, right. So if, if the decision, if the, if the rescission is upheld by the ZBA, once, once we get to a vote tonight, then then we would go forward next on the merits of the the application to amend. If the ZBA decides that the rescission was not proper, then this August 21, 2020 letter stands and we don't get to the merits of the application.
So you would not then look at the amended?
If, if the, if the board decided that the August 21, that the October 5th rescission was not proper or the reasons that Jim Dumont articulated, or for whatever reasons the board came up with, then the August 21 letter would stand and we would not get to the merits of the application. They would, the Terrasum wouldn't, wouldn't need anything further. It would already have what it needed to go forward.
Okay, so I do have some comments about that. Just knowing that, seeing the site plan that was originally approved, the conditional use site plan that was originally approved, there are some elements that need to get reviewed, like any conditional use plan, screening, circulation, parking. Those things will be affected by the new plan. But so that won't, but you're saying that if this, if you reverse your decision, that those things won't even be considered.
Well, I'm not sure what reversed the
And, oh, and one more thing, and the, the backup septic that's out there as well.
Let's, because we're, our, our nomenclature is getting in the way. We, we, the ZBA didn't make any decision yet on, on either issue before us. So it's, let's, let's, let's think about the issues that you just raised, the screening and, and various traffic flow, site plan issues. Let's call that the merits of the app, proposed amendment.
Okay.
We don't get to the merits until we, in order to get to the merits, we have to have a decision on, on 3B. Have a decision on the legal propriety of the October 5th rescission. Does that rescission letter stand? If so, then we get on to the merits of Terrasum's application to amend. And you couldn't then speak your piece about what you think about the various issues raised by the application.
But if not?
But if, if
We don't even go there.
If the ZBA were to decide that, you know what, that October 5th rescission just, just doesn't fly, then the October 20, then the August 21st letter that Chris issued to Terrasum stands. And we never, we do not get to the merits.
Okay.
That's the decision tree.
Okay, so I'll go back to the decision. So I would just like to make a statement to everybody who's listening that I feel like it would be as a, as a neighbor, but I also happen to be a planning commission chair. I'm not, I'm not wearing that hat right now. But this is, I feel this is extremely bad precedent to just accept this mistake and then say, okay, just let's go ahead because we're concerned about the timeline for, of the applicant and the inconvenience of the applicant. And, you know, instead of the overall effect on our community, I think it's a very bad precedent to just accept mistakes that are made. Let's fix them and move forward and try not to make them in the future. We spent a lot of time, we've spent a lot of time in the last year and a half on the plan and redoing the zoning regs and subdivision regs and been very careful with everything we have done. And I have a very difficult time that this is just, oh, we made a mistake. And I'm, I'm, I am saying that lightly. I understand it's much more complicated than that. But I think it's a very complicated issue for other people to understand. So that is my comment.
Okay. You understand that the the, the impact of the rescission letter of October 5th was to do exactly what you're advocating is that it's, it's saying that, all right, there was a mistake and now we're going to deal with it.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
But to go backwards and then say, oh, that was wrong. I'm just saying that is not the right direction.
I, I, good, I understand.
Okay.
We understand, I understand the point you were making.
Okay.
To make sure you under
I understand, I, we're on the same page.
Got it. And is, are there any other, Jim, did you want to?
Could I, could I make a comment or ask a question? My name's Skylar Gale, I'm a representative for Terrasum Movement.
Sure.
As I understand it, a CPG was granted and that stands, as you said earlier today, or earlier tonight.
Right.
Question at hand is whether or not we can omit 11 spaces from the parking plan. As it stands right now, it is, let's see here, one parking space per employee plus one per four seats and gathering places. We have six seats, no employees that attend the Bristol location. One attendee lives there on and off, but she's currently out of state due to COVID. The car in mind, there are four spaces allocated in and by the barn and three more on the north side of the property adjacent to Meyer property.
Yeah, Skylar, Skylar, we don't want to get in, I don't want to discuss the merits of the application yet. We got to get over this procedural hurdle first. And, and if, if we do, we're going to get to the merits and you can, you can fill us in at length about the parking changes, okay?
Actually, though, what seems to have happened as far as the parking, and I know you don't want me to mention it, but I will, is that the zoning regulations have changed about the parking. Therefore, we're not, will we be considering it using the old regulations or the present regulations? Or maybe the next regulations? And the whole, the whole thing may be a moot question anyway. That's because of the change in regulations.
That's kind of what I'm wondering because it, what we applied for by the current bylaw fits. The CPG was already granted, that project's not before the ZBA.
I was going to ask you how many, when we got to there, how many chairs you, you have.
Let's, 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 we'll deal with the merits when the time comes. We're, we're, if and when the time comes, we're not there yet. Is there any other question from anyone regarding the procedural issue or the procedural question about the, this, the October 5th rescission of the August 21 deemed approval letter that the ZA issued?
What worries me is, does this mean that if at some point somebody started to build a house and they decide that they did something wrong, that it can be, the permit can be rescinded? Or, I mean, how far does this rescission go? How long a timeline? That sort of worries me. I mean, it's not the, the mistake, you know, excusing a mistake. We don't make mistakes, but how long, it's the timeline for rescinding the permit. And that worries me and I don't know what the law is on that.
Right, so this is Jim Dumont speaking. It's that concern that has motivated the Supreme Court to reach the conclusions that it has. The Supreme Court has said, because of that very concern, that even if a zoning decision or a permit was issued in violation of the Constitution, once the appeal period is over, it cannot be challenged. Property owners, landowners need to know that once they have a permit, it's not going to be yanked at some time in the future.
Any other questions or comments about the procedural issue before us?
Bruce? Yes, this is Bruce Beaton and I live on 19 School Street. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not an aggrieved neighbor. I can't see this project because there's a large building between us and it. But I am interested in the, in the process here. And from what I understand, this could pretty easily unravel into a, a legal squabble that would probably not serve anybody's interest very well in the long term. And my question is, is, is there an avenue of communication that could be used between the town or some townspeople and the applicant that is not adversarial and is not based upon statute and regulation, but rather on the, the premise of good with? I don't know exactly what the intent of this solar project is. It may be a project that has a, a community benefit in mind. I, I really don't know. But it seems like there are a few things that might, from a design point of view, mitigate, not eliminate, but lessen the potential negative impact on the neighborhood, on the town's aesthetic experience of this area. And is there some basis for the conversation? Which is to say, we can, you know, is there, is there, given the circumstances, is, is there, you know, is there some discussion that can be had about what we as townspeople suggest to mitigate the impact of this? And would it not be in the applicant's best interest, really, in the long run, to, to listen and to, and to acknowledge that maybe it would make it a more successful project? From at least an aesthetic point of view. I, I throw that out there sort of as an innocent, I don't know the process here, but it occurs to me that that there's the potential for some real headbutting here that would be unfortunate. So there it is.
Jim, I'm, Jim or Skylar, if you, I'll give you the opportunity to respond to that if, if you so desire.
I'd be happy to take a small jab at it. I would agree that there could have been more communication. And some of it has to do with a little bit of diffusion of responsibility with people involved in the project, such as our contractor who filed the CPG, not me. At the time, I was, I was having conversations with the most concerned neighbors, Peter and Katie, and was trying to extend an olive branch and have communications. But they deteriorated quickly and then kind of both parties went into wallop zone. I, I also decided to break communication for legal reasons and for purposes of keeping communication to ourselves so it wouldn't be used against us. And I guess, and also talking to Chris Purley years before the project and during this, this jab at this project, because it's been proposed a couple of times. And this is again, just for the CPG or for the solar itself, not the amended parking spaces. And as I reviewed it with Chris a lot, a while ago, it was, it was seen that everything, it didn't trigger a billing design commission review. And in fact, that's stated in a letter that he wrote in email correspondence. It, it became a very contentious project quite quickly, I guess, as, as things started moving forward. It would be great if there was a way to communicate in a way that it would, it would be constructive and not have to fear if your language is going to be used as a weapon further down the road. But once you feel like whatever you say is going to be weaponized. But once you feel like whatever you say is going to be weaponized, that's when communication stops.
Any other questions or comment from the public?
I'm Harold Masterson. Could I, uh, just give a statement?
Yeah, what's your address, Harold?
7 Church Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, our property, we have here, been in the family for a hundred years. And we've always enjoyed being able to sit on our back porch and watch what's going on down at the park and down at the church and, uh, we basically can see everything going on down there. When this hundred foot, uh, or ninety foot, uh, canopy goes through there, we're going to see nothing but the back of the solar panels.
Um, can I respond?
It just seems like an injustice.
What Mr. Masterson finish? Sorry, yeah, sorry.
It just seems like an injustice to the neighbors to have something like that happen. And it's, it not even been, I have, we were never even told about it.
Uh, Mr. Masterson, can I respond to you on that?
Absolutely.
Um, originally there was a design for a parking canopy and I agree, that would be a major eyesore and it would really block your view. Uh, and that was to, um, be in compliance with the parking plan. After Perk got ahold of the project, the, the solar installer, the, the ninety foot long array is designed to be no taller than seven feet at, at, at the height of it, the highest part of it. We have privacy fences and I've seen other privacy fences that are at least seven, if not ten feet. In fact, some of the fences we removed from the property were at least ten feet. Um, hedgerows that are on, that are bordering the properties are six, seven feet. I, I don't, I think, you know, when I'm out there mowing the lawn, I think you're the White House in the back there.
That's right.
And I think you even have a little bit of an elevation. And I, I don't think it, yes, I'm not going to lie and say it's not going to, you probably won't see the dentist in the Baptist church parking lot, but you're going to be able to see the park.
Right, I gotta disagree with you. Uh, I've been out there. I've got a lot of pictures of it, what it looks like now, and I'd be glad to show them to you after it's done.
Sure.
If we can't see the dentist, we won't see the park.
Any additional comments or questions from anyone?
Kevin, there, you know, we've dealt with, uh, maximum heights of fences before. Do you recall, you know, what it is in the village?
Of fence?
Yeah, barriers, yeah.
Uh, no, I did off the, off the-
Is there such a thing or is my memory-
Well, it's not, it's not ringing a bell. Uh, no, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I, that doesn't, that, uh-
I believe there is a, a bylaw for the height of fences.
It, it, it could be.
Brenda, do you remember?
It, it, Chris says in the, in the downtown, uh, the, in the design review, in the design review district, which is, which is the downtown business block.
Okay.
But it doesn't, this is not a fence though. It's, and considered an accessory structure. And I think, as far as I can figure out from the zoning regulations, that one has to stick to, um, thirty-five feet or less.
Thirty-five?
For a building, that's a building.
No, that's it, but it's considered an accessory structure as far as I can figure out. Because what we're doing is we're looking at the zoning regulations. We're not saying this would be nice or that would be nice. We look at them and we say, what does this tell us that we have to do? And as far as I could find out, a solar energy system is a permitted accessory use and it must meet the dimensional standards, um, for the section. And usually that's thirty-five feet.
Well, we, Brenda, we don't have any authority over-
No, but I'm saying if it, if it went more than thirty-five feet, one might-
Well, it, it, it doesn't, but if it did, zoning couldn't, we wouldn't have anything to say about it.
Yeah, but it's not a fence.
Correct.
No, actually, um, it doesn't meet any of the design review criteria because it's a solar array.
No, it's something else.
Yeah, but it's a good point. If it did have to satisfy the standards, it could be thirty-five feet tall.
Theoretically.
Yeah, the, the, the hypotheticals, uh, aren't helpful or germane at, at the, uh, stage we're at right now, which is the procedural question. Brenda, and to your point about, uh, like how far does this go, you're, you know, about rescission? This is, in my view, a one-off. It, uh, it, it's, uh, it's not something, uh, that throws into, uh, doubt the, uh, issuance of, of permits and, and subsequent rescission of them. There's enough uniqueness about this particular, uh, procedural. Gordian's not, that it really, that it really is a one-off. I ha- I have zero fears about the, uh, any procedural impact of, of a decision to uphold the, uh, rescission of October 5th. Does anybody, uh, have any, uh, questions about the procedural issue before us? Or comments before we, uh, I may, before I make a motion to, uh, for, for vote?
We haven't heard from Ted Desmond. What, does he have any comments or can he add something to?
He, he, he said he, we did hear from him and he did not have any questions or comments, but we can ask again.
No, I just-
He's good.
Okay.
Could I, I get like one, one more comment?
Go ahead.
I just, I just think this was handled poorly right from the start. Uh, we was never notified anything and it affects us probably as much as it does anyone, maybe even more as far as our, uh, uh, veal. And I just wonder what's, what is going to come, you know? That what's going to be continued on this. It's just, it just, uh, very sad as far as we're concerned.
Yeah, I, I understand that and, um, the rules of the Public Utility Commission with respect to net metering vary. Uh, the process varies depending on the size of the project and, um, for a project of this size, you don't get much if anything. And, uh, as far as notice, and I think, uh, that's unfortunate. With respect to, so I share that view, uh, with respect to the town of Bristol's handling, yes, there were certainly mistake, there was a mistake made. Uh, we all recognize that and we're trying to address it as best we can. We can't un, unring the bell. Uh, here we are. Did things go the way they're supposed to? No, they did not. That's understood. That's accepted by all.
I, I'm-
Yes, Bruce?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I'm sort of curious about what your perception of the, uh, consequence of standing by the rescinding of the letter might be, uh, in terms of time, uh, uh, and in terms of, uh, cost for the town. And in contrast, I'm sort of curious about your feeling about what the, uh, cost to the town uh, might be if you did not rescind the letter, but you accepted Mr. Dumont's point of view, that, uh, uh, it's not rescindable.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh-
You just lay out your, your understanding and your consequence to this decision.
You know, we're, whatever we decide on this particular question, someone's not going to be happy. And, and they, they could appeal the decision to the environmental court if, if they wanted. And, uh, the town, uh, when there's an appeal to the environmental court, the municipality isn't necessarily, uh, fighting the fight. It's often between, uh, the applicant and, and, uh, and, uh, an interested person, a neighbor who, uh, has, has a, a, a appeal point. But that said, towns, the town frequent, town of Bristol and other towns frequently sort of monitor the entrance and appearance in the proceedings and, and monitor it, but don't act, actually actively litigate it. So, um, it's, it's hard to say what the, uh, consequences to the town are because it depends on uh, whether or not there's an appeal from the disappointed party, whoever, whichever side that is. That answer your question?
Not precisely. I mean, uh, I mean, it seems to me as if that's going to be appealed. I, I-
Well, right, but, right, if, if, if the decision is appealed, uh, the primary combatants in the appeal are the, are going to be the applicant and the, and the, the neighbors primarily, so, um,
Well, if that, if the, if it is the town that rescinds the letter and does that improperly, wouldn't the disagreement be between the applicant and the town?
You lost me. Which, what, what's the, what's the if, if the town does what?
If the town-
If we uphold the rescission-
Yep, then-
We then move to the merits.
Right, but if that's disagree, if the applicant disagrees with the town's right to rescind that letter, doesn't that mean that it's-
No, I, well, hypothetically, if the town, uh, if the ZBA upholds the rescission, we move to the merits. Uh, what the applicant does depends on what the merits decision is. If the, if the ZBA decides to grant the amendment, that'll be the, the applicant, how, I'll, I'll speak for Jim. Uh, what I think is the applicant's not going to go off and spend money on an appeal of a decision where they got what they ultimately wanted. Uh, so the proceed, the procedural, the procedural issue about upholding their decision or letter or not would become moot if the, if the, uh, amendment were granted. If the amendment were, if the rescission was upheld and then the board decided to deny the amendment, I'm, dollars to donuts, the applicant will, uh, appeal and they would, one of the arguments would be, uh, the town should not have, uh, proceeded to the merits at all because their, their, uh, application was deemed approved, um, by, by, by virtue of the letter of August 21.
It's too bad that we can't go at this backwards and see if the, um, what was it, the eight parking spaces are enough? Or seven?
Yeah, we can't put the cart, we can't put the cart before the horse on it, so.
Well, that's how we'll, yeah. That's how a wheelbarrow works.
I just want to make, um, a couple more points. Uh, I think that we, as like probably you feel too, we, we should be able to discuss the merits of the application. We can't do that unless you uphold the letter-
The rescission.
Rescission, thank you.
Yes.
And then you can talk about your parking spaces and screening and all those things.
Correct.
Um, I, I feel that that is the best way to proceed, to, to stand by that letter. That does two things, that you can talk about the merits and that you don't set a precedent of backing out of some, you know, that we get it right. A mistake was made and that you tried to correct it, that the town tried to correct it. Um, I also wanted to just let the people here know that the planning commission has been working on an enhanced energy plan for almost two years now. And if it had been approved, which we were hoping that it would have been approved by now, it might have had some sway in this matter, maybe. Because that enhanced energy plan will become part of our town plan, which will be coming up for a vote in March. And that plan does allow the town to have a say at the table when it comes to solar projects.
Yeah, before the PUC.
Do not have that in place now. And that was held up because of change of members of the board, a whole bunch of new members, and, and for whatever reasons.
No, that, that, that status does, um, provide some greater participation in the process, I think, as far as saying with the PUC. And it, and it does affect projects with respect to, uh, the rate that the solar project can get for its power, if it's a preferred site or not. And so it, it does have some impact in the proceedings before the PUC about whether a proposed project gets a certificate of public good or not.
Right. And just to follow up on that, and, well, I was, the, the, the most difficult thing for us is that this project is a energy project that is not benefiting the community at all. It's going somewhere else. It's going out of town. It's part of a larger project and it's, you know, it just happens to be right on our green. That is, I know that is not the issue here, but, and we can't do anything about it. But we can at least say, you know, maybe we get some screening so Harold doesn't have to look at the back of these things. And maybe we can make it look halfway decent because we know we're not going to be able to do anything about it because of, because there's no way to basically fight this applicant and win.
Jim, Dumont?
I want to keep this conversation as respectful as possible.
Yeah, that's-
I do need to point out that there's law to apply. And you don't want to go down the path of saying, let's ignore the law because it's not convenient in this particular case. That's not a path any of us want to take in this day and age in particular. If you get my drift. So, um, the question of screening by law is decided by the Public Utility Commission. It's explicit in the statute. So I, I hope none of you accept Katie's invitation to second guess what the legislature passed. That's a path we don't want to go down. Um, as far as whether this would be a precedent, I usually agree with ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of everything I ever hear Kevin say.
That's pretty good.
Kevin is really the voice of reason wherever he goes. He really tries hard to get it right and be reasonable and fair. Um, I do disagree with something Kevin said a little while ago. Um, this is, this would be a precedent because the proceeding we're in right now is a public meeting and the minutes are being taken of this meeting. If the ZBA were to vote that it's okay for a town to rescind a decision, that will be a precedent. The precedent will be that the town is not an interested party and therefore the requirement of appealing does not apply to a town. And therefore, going forward, every landowner in the town of Bristol will be suffering from the precedent that the town can revoke a permit at any time.
Are you saying the town can't appeal its own decisions?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The town can't appeal its own decisions? In other words, the town makes a decision, so it is that it can't change its mind?
It can within the appeal period. Yes.
Okay.
The appeal period has expired. And so with that, yes, you're correct with that qualification, though I meant to say after the appeal period has expired. But that's not rescinding a permit, that's appealing a permit.
So obviously, it it expired without anybody knowing about it.
Yeah, and the Supreme Court has dealt with that many times before and said.
Hold it, wait, wait, who who just made that comment? You've got to identify yourself and be recognized.
Harold Masterson.
Oh, sorry. I saw another, I saw another screen light up without a name. Go ahead, Harold.
I will just. So obviously, this permit expired without any of us knowing about the permit even existed.
That's true. Hence, hence the difficulties we're one of, hence the difficulty we're having here. Why why this is not an easy case?
Well, the real problem is we're not talking about what everyone is thinking about, which is the solar array. We are talking about parking spaces. And that's the only thing that we have been asked to discuss.
Yes, when we get, when we get to the merits, that's correct.
But even when we get to the merits.
If we get, if we get to the merits.
Well, if we get to, we are not going to be discussing solar power.
That's correct.
Because we can't. It's outside of what we can do.
That's correct.
So all we can do is we look at these little parking spaces and decide whether they have enough parking spaces and they very well might.
That's correct. Any other comments or questions regarding the procedural issue before us? Okay. I I move that the ZBA uphold the August 5, 2020, rescission of the zoning administrators' letter of August 21, 2020, regarding deemed approval of application number 10-46. And I I understand and appreciate all of Jim's comments and analysis. This is a thorny one. But I think it's best for all that we get to the merits and 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 address the decision. So I I I believe what I said about the legal analysis. I do believe everything I I said is correct. Law is often gray. And you don't have a crystal clear answer, so you've got to make a judgment call. And I I think the the decision to rescind was the correct one. And so I move that we approve it. So some, someone would need to second if we're going to get to a vote.
Can you read the motion?
Ted Ted seconded. Any debate?
Can you, can you please reread the motion as you have written it or somebody?
The motion is, yeah, I talked more than the motion is that my motion is to for the ZBA to uphold the zoning administrators' October 5, 2020, rescission of the zoning administrators' letter of August 21, 2020, regarding deemed approval of application number 10-46.
Is there going to be any comment about this is a specific one to this particular case or any reasons or just what you said?
I don't, I'm not sure. Well, first, Ted, we've got a second, right? All right. So Ted, seconded. Any other debate or questions from the board?
So what you've read is the complete motion?
Yes. It's a, it's a pretty discreet issue. Does the, do we approve the rescission letter, your decision, the October 5 rescission letter? And and if if the answer is yes, then we get on to the merits. If the answer is no, then we don't. And the application is deemed approved. I I would note, if it's not already obvious to everyone, that we only have four members here. And it's a seven member board, so to take any action, whatever it is, is going to take four votes. We've all got to vote the same. So if it's not a unanimous decision of the four members here, there is no decision.
Does no decision leave it in limbo or is it a disapproval?
It's, there's a no decision is a is a no decision and yeah, that would create even more complexity for the applicant and 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 the neighbors. Hence, my comment about, I think it makes practical sense as well as legal sense to uphold the rescission so we can get to the merits.
I move that we vote.
All right, there, there are no further questions or comments from the board. How do you vote, Brenda, on the motion? Yes, no?
Unfortunately, you haven't convinced me that this is important enough. Well, not so much important enough, but that the total outcome will be what changed enough to vote in the affirmative. So I vote no, you haven't convinced me.
Okay.
Less it makes, but.
Then there is no, then there is no decision, unfortunately, because.
The others can show that they approve.
Because there are not four, four votes, so the motion cannot be approved. I guess we should, we should maybe for housekeeping purposes, record other people's votes. But so I I would vote in favor of the motion. Carol?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Ted? Okay, so the votes are three to one. There is no decision of of the board on
Sorry about that.
Of the, on the question before us, so therefore, we cannot get to question two. So that means, that means we adjourn. And I guess Jim will be talking to Joe McLean and and people will have to figure it out. But we, as a board, we can't, we can't do anything unless we have four votes. And if we don't have four votes, it's really out of our hands and the lawyers will then figure it out. So. This is the, this will guarantee more or dispute and dissension, I'm afraid, but so.
Can I be heard on that?
Yes, Jim.
Sure. I guess I procedurally don't agree with you, first of all. If the status of this appeal is it's what we lawyers called de novo, that meant that in order for the rescission to be upheld, it would have to be an affirmative vote. The fact that there is not an affirmative vote to uphold the zoning administrator's decision means that it is reversed.
You, that that may, that may be correct, Jim, and I I understand that point. I'm just saying that that's a, that's a, that's a legal decision outside the purview. I feel with the ZB at this point, I don't want to opine on it. And and Joe, Joe McLean may agree, may very well agree with you. He may not, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna weigh into it because I think our role as the ZBA is is to to take action or not. And when we don't take action because we don't have the votes, then then it'll be up to the town attorney to help interpret what the status is. And Joe will agree with you.
I think the analysis doesn't end there. On one hand, if it's de novo and the failure for of an affirmative vote means the zoning administrator's decision has been rendered ineffective, then the August permit is in effect.
On the other, that back up, back up, Jim, I I spaced momentarily because it's 20 after nine and it's been a long day.
So on the one hand, if it's de novo review, then the town has the burden of proof. The town didn't meet the proof, then the zoning administrator's decision is now in effect, void. On the other hand, if it was my client's burden of proof, then we lost because we don't have four votes, which means you go on the next matter, which is you dress it on the merits. And I I think it would be a poor use of your board's time to force them to come back later and also force us into court. When I know the judge is going to want to know, why didn't you have the vote on the merits? There is no principle I can think of that prevents you from having the vote on the merits. You're all here, you have a quorum, so that there is a complete record for appeal if, for God's sake, if we have to. It would make sense to have the vote on the merits at the same time.
Well, because, because we only get to the merits if the it's just, the rescission is 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 upheld. If if we, if the rescission doesn't stand, then your application is deemed approved.
Now you're stepping outside your role as chairman, Kevin, and you're acting as the town attorney, which.
No, I'm just, I'm responding to the question, the point you just made.
Notice that went out was that there would be a vote on both questions. The notice did not state, we're only going to get the merits if there's a certain vote on the other one. In fact, the notice stated that the merits question was first on the agenda and then the procedural question was second. So the public was notified they would be hearing on both, a vote on both matters. It's on the agenda and I haven't seen any vote to take it off the agenda. I hope there isn't. I think it's a poor use.
Well, you're, you're, you're correct in 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 the structure of the, of the agenda. That's true.
You have nothing to lose by voting on the merits and potentially elect to gain.
Well, that part I I agree with. I was perhaps in properly assuming that your position would be that it would be an advisory vote.
No, I think it would be an important vote and it only becomes advisory if the town attorney advises you that it's advisory. Until that time, it's on the agenda. You should finish your agenda.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I'd rather, as I said, get to the merits and if we do maybe we get to a place of closure, maybe we don't. If if it's a mistake, procedural mistake under the circumstances here to proceed to the merits, well, you know, the the appeal to the environmental court is de novo, so it would all happen again if there were an appeal. So I don't have a problem proceeding to the merits. It may, it may be, it may not, but I I agree with Jim's overall point is we're all, we are all here and maybe, maybe it maybe it helps in some way.
Well, is it going to do any harm?
Yeah, no, I agree if with with I think it's, you know, it's the applicant's point for what to to make that, no, don't go to the merits because it's a, it'd be an advisory vote because the rescission stands. But if the applicant's saying, saying, you know, I I would prefer to proceed to the merits, I I respect that. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yes, I think, I think it would be good. I ask that you do that.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we now, the ZB now proceed to the merits of which would be item 3A on the agenda, which is the application to amend the existing conditional use permit to reduce the number of offsite parking spaces from 18 to seven. So that's, that's the motion. It's procedural motion. It's not a vote on the merits. It's a procedural motion to keep going. We have a second.
A second.
Any debate? All those in favor? Well, let's do them one at a time since I, so I can be clear. Carol, what's your vote?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
I vote yes. For oh, we proceed to the merits. Jim, do you want to or Skylar articulate the amendment? Sure, you've got a bit, you know, I summarized it, but it's your application. So if you could summarize for the board or make a statement about the application.
Helen, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are we looking at a civic, you know, what is, it's a civic use? Okay.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, you know, there's parking by, if it's an office service or civic, I wasn't sure what it was.
Well, there's, we have an existing conditional use permit from 2012.
Correct.
It was for, and that was the second permit. And the permit was for a community facility. And as part of that permit, one of the conditions was for there to be 18 offsite parking spaces on the, on the property. And that's what was, I'm really echoing now for some reason, that's what was required under the zoning bylaws at the time in 2012.
Okay.
So now the amendment is to.
I think I understand her confusion. I sent out in section 711.
You're muted.
I'm trying to.
Can you hear Chris?
No.
Okay, I'm going to unmute. Or actually, I'll just come over and explain right here. Sorry. So Carol, my understanding is your question is in regards to the
What you sent.
Sent out.
Yes.
This this afternoon is in regards to section 711, where the, the different uses and what parking requirements it has. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is where she she's talking, Kevin.
Okay, so so you can answer.
Okay, so yeah, that is, that it does fall under civic use. That was
Okay.
Of that, when that was added to the company.
I don't, I don't know what you.
I just sent. I just sent, can you please screen share?
Oh, it's for use as a church. It's a civic use.
Hold on. So, so Jim, do you want to, or Skylar, address?
I, what did you go for?
Amendment, I'll, I'll make a statement. So the purpose of the hearing is to address a permit application to reduce the parking at TMT by omitting 11 spaces that are allocated in the paddock. The reason for omitting the parking spaces, we have enough parking. Article, section 711 states that for civic use, an entity needs one parking space per employee plus one per four seats in a gathering place. We have six seats and no employees that attend the Bristol location. One attendee lives there on and off, but she is currently out of the state due to COVID. With her car in mind, there are four spaces allocated in and by the barn and three more on the north side of the property adjacent to Meyer property, providing a total of seven spaces. Attendees include Martine, Bina, Karen, Tyler, and myself. With five attendees and six chairs, we need two parking spaces and we have seven.
Yeah.
And this is what I was saying, because the zoning, the definitions or the discussion, this has been broken down much more into smaller, different types of parking than was available to, for us to discuss before. When we discussed it, we knew that we had, we were talking about much too much parking, but there was no other way we could do it.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we proceed to the public comments and questions?
Well,
Ted, Ted's Wait, Ted is speaking.
What is happening with the use of the facility?
Hold on, can people hear Ted?
No.
So Ted, why don't you come over?
Yeah, so, so what has changed with the use of the properties since the 18 parking spaces were approved eight years ago?
I would say
Nothing has changed from, from the use, but the, the regulations have changed.
Correct. Did you hear that? Say that, say that again, Skylar.
Actually
Go ahead, Skylar.
Nothing has changed with the use, but the regulations have changed, as, as you said, Brenda.
There, there was not a, there did not used to be a civic uses category, which this does seem to fit into and therefore probably should be appropriate.
Carol, any questions?
No.
Okay, Brenda, any questions or?
A comment if we do make a proposal that in it we put that we have not more than so many, we're assuming not more than so many seats, like one employee and what's 24 seats or something?
Yeah, the count of the seats is six.
No, but I'm saying
So, yeah, we
seven parking places. If you
So Brenda, the, you are correct. So what, the way it would work is they're issued seven parking places. They would be essentially allotted 24 seats in their, in the building and one employee.
And I think that I was just gonna say, I think that should be stated in the motion.
Okay, yeah, and if, if they need, if they want to increase the usage or employees or whatever, they would exceed that, they would have to come back to you for yet another amendment.
Not me.
No, to the board.
Skylar, you understand that? Yeah, you're fine with that, right?
That, that gives you some more leeway to expand as well.
Yeah, we, that makes sense.
Anything further from anyone on the board?
No.
Go ahead, Carol.
No, I have nothing further.
Okay, all right, all right, let's go to the public. Katie?
I hadn't raised my hand yet.
No, I thought I saw, I, I thought I saw a little flicker.
Yeah, well, in the original site plan, and I did actually put in the chat if I thought we were gonna actually be able to see the site plan, but no, no one responded.
Well, hold on.
I can share the screen.
Chris is gonna try and share the screen.
So I'll keep talking while you're doing that. Okay, I, I know what it looks like. I just thought maybe some other people might wanna know. Originally, when the parking spaces were there in the original permit, conditional use permit, a screen was, and so when I was referring to a screen before, it was screening for parking, Jim, not for solar. There was screening that was part of the plan that we had, was a condition that was made when that plan was approved. So I'm curious, I don't see that in, in this plan. So that, that's a change, but that is not, hasn't been noted. And so I'm, I'm curious how you respond to that.
Yeah. Katie, can you clarify for me? I, I just didn't quite understand the, what your screening point about the
When this plan in 2011 was passed, was permitted, there was a line of screening on our property line with Terrasum's property. And it's not on there now. And that was a condition, that was something that was decided due to the fact that there was gonna be a line of cars basically in our backyard.
Right, and, and was that, was that screening not?
The screening is not, never was put in.
It never was put in.
But that was part of phases.
Who's talking?
Hold on, wait.
I'm talking to Kevin. So that was part of this plan. So it, it was fine with us because there was no cars there, but that, that was part of the plan. So I'm just, as the process, you're taking those cards out. You also have in this plan taken the screening out. So I think that needs to be addressed.
Well, I'm looking at the second decision, we'll call it the first amendment. And we had so the 2012 decision approved the phase two site plan with, with, with minor revisions. And there were five conditions. The and so the site, the, the site, phase two site plan revised the previous site plan in certain ways. But the, and I think this is correct. The orig, the, the other parts of phase one were still in place. I'd have to look at phase one, but as I'm reading the approval of phase two site plan, these were the conditions. Terrasum shall implement the phase two site plan, however, the phase two site plan may be revised as follows. A, the existing spirea bush north of the three bay garage shall be removed and may be relocated to a place that does not conflict with the phase two site plan. The existing location and orientation of the grape arbor may be, may be maintained. C, the one or two removable ground posts may be installed between the existing grape arbor and the three bay garage to restrict access to parking spaces eight through 18 in the paddock area. The notion was that the, those, the parking on the grass in the paddock area would be rarely needed. And so there could be temporary removable posts that would be in place to keep people from parking there when there were, when there were less than seven cars, so they could park in the other, other lots. D, if and when Terrasum so desires, Terrasum may fully implement the phase two site plan by shifting the grape arbor location in the east-west orientation depicted on the site plan and widening the driveway between the grape arbor and the three bay garage. Number, so those are the four subparts of the revision of the phase two site plan. So the second condition is, one of the spaces in the three bay garage will be reserved for Terrasum's community organizer, so that the person most often present on behalf of Terrasum parks his or her vehicle in the community organizer's designated space inside the garage. Condition three, by June 1, 2012, Terrasum shall install three hedges and two trees or shrubs, tree slash shrub depicted on the phase two site plan in the northeast corner of the property. Condition four, parking spaces numbers five, six, and seven. And those are the ones that are directly across from your house, Katie. Shall not be paved, it may remain grass. These three parking spaces shall be marked in the ground or by signage, which shall be installed with reasonable promptness after trees, the trees have been planted. And the fifth condition, parking space number four shall be marked on the ground by signage. And number four is next to the garage. So those were the conditions that accompanied our decision of 2012. So are you telling, are you saying, Katie, that the three hedges and the two shrubs for the northeast corner of the and phase two site plan were not installed?
No, those
No.
Those were
Okay.
Ones by, closer to North Street were installed.
Okay.
We had a discussion and actually we followed up with you afterwards because it was not, and of course I have nothing to prove this. The hedges were not drawn on the plan and we corresponded with the zoning, with you in 2001, ever, 12, that they needed to be drawn on the plan along, along the property line, the east-west property line, which would screen those eight to 18 parking spots. Now, anyways, those spaces are going away, but they're going away because something else is going in its place. And
And I, I would add, Kevin?
Say your name.
Peter Meyer.
Okay.
I've been listening in. When I was at the meeting, when this plan was presented and approved, and one of the caveats was if phase two occurred, which was these 18, these spaces in the paddock, that there would be a hedge along that northern border of our property. And when we got the note, notice back from the zoning board with the approval, that was not in there. I wrote you a letter specifically saying that that was the understanding and the language from the meeting that there would be a hedge there. And I never heard back from you or the zoning board. So I'm curious about that. And then I'm also curious about with any new conditional use plan to this existing plan with the solar panels, with setbacks and with the reserve or alternate septic plan, how that fits in with the 90-foot-long array of solar panels? And if there is an actual plan to look at that shows that?
I, I don't get the last part, Peter. I don't recall what you're saying about the letter, but I can say
Well, I can send you a copy of the letter that I wrote to you about that.
I, I, I'm not disputing you what, but there, if, assuming that there is that letter, there's nothing that the board can do, once it decision, that, once it issues its decision. The only avenue if someone doesn't like the conditions is to appeal.
Right, but if, if there was a understanding that that was the condition, that should be upheld, I would assume.
Well, I don't have the phase two site plan in front of me. I see the, by June 1, 2014, install the three hedges.
Right, so what I would say is
Are those the three hedges you're talking about?
No, so what I, what I, what I'm going back to is when we went to that meeting for this particular parking plan, it was a revised plan from an earlier plan. We brought up the issue of screening and it was agreed upon. But when you issued your letter from, for approval for this, you excluded that. And I specifically wrote to you to ask why that wasn't in there. It should have been in there because it was talked about at the meeting. So I guess we could pull the minutes of that meeting, whatever the date was. And it's not a big deal. We're just looking to protect everyone who is in this village, who was looking at the green, from looking at the back of 90 feet of metal. So if we can't stop the solar, if we can put a hedge there, that would be great.
Yeah.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. That's, was the original plan and was budgeted for. And since hiring Jim, we've allocated that hedgerow fund to our legal fees.
Well, legal fees are one thing, right? I mean, we all know that.
Jim will waive, Jim will waive his fees, he always does. If, if this goes till 10 o'clock, he promised to waive, waive his fees, so
It's a half an hour to start, so
And can you drop, Chris, can you take the? Off? Yeah. Anything? I will go here and look at the minutes because I, because I'm curious because the, the minutes would record the motion made, and the motion made would specify various, the various conditions. That's, that's how the decision gets written from the, the minute notes about what the conditions were in the motion made. So if the hedge that people talked about didn't make it into the motion, not, that got voted out, then can't do anything about that. But I, I am curious about it and I think it would be helpful if if the neighbors' concerns could be addressed in that way by installing the hedge that the, the Myers were hoping to see and others back in 2012. I think that would be prudent.
I guess I, I understood that, that hedge as being needed to be installed once we started using that for parking as part of phase three, or I don't have it in front of me either.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, admittedly, it, it's a, it's a big file. My point is 10 years ago and eight years ago, thing, you know, there were, there were, was talk about various screening options. And I, I don't have phase two, the site, I don't have the phase two site plan right here in front of me, so I can't say for sure. But it seems apparent to me that it would make a lot of sense for the applicant to say, yes, we'll put in a hedge.
I already, we did that right from the beginning. I already, we did that right from the beginning. That was part of all of the original design. It was after, um, many battles that, and lots of legal fees that we were like, and in the original budget for this whole project, I put, I personally pushed for head for screening. Then after all of this, we said, we gotta just take that screening sky and it, and it goes towards all the, all the legal fees.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I think I'm asking you to revisit that.
I, I, I mean, I have been revisiting it and I, and I do keep bringing it up and I will, and I'll bring it up again.
No.
And I, I think it's, uh, I think right from the beginning that, that was in that, no, not even I think it was intended to do. It was part of the original scope of the project.
Okay. Well, Kevin, can I confer with Sky? I'll call him on his cell phone.
Absolutely, dude. Whatever you want to do.
Step away from the, mute yourself and then call me on your cell phone.
So we're waiting for them to have a cell phone call. This is ridiculous. What? Most absurd thing I've ever heard.
It's on you.
No.
Seem to be stuck, limbo.
All right, um, I mean, I, I'm not really sure what, what's going on anymore, but, um, you know, I, I think the whole, at this whole discussion of the hedge is, is maybe a moot point and, um, we can agree to put the hedge in.
Okay. Thank you. Any, uh, further, uh, questions or, uh, comments from the public? Any further questions or comments from the board before?
So you're putting the hedge, uh, you know, putting in the hedge, you know, does not address Harold's concern of, uh, of having his, uh, view of the park destroyed.
But there's nothing in the zoning regulations about views that's been brought up before. Our zoning regulations do not preserve views.
Further questions or comments from the board? Bruce, did you raise your hand just now?
I, I did. Uh, thank you. Um, so, so my understanding is that with these now six parking spots, will there be no change?
Seven.
Seven parking spots, will there be no change to the property? Or will there be a change by adding parking that is not currently there?
No, the, the, the seven designated spots on the existing conditional use approval will remain the same. The 11 spots in the grassy area called, which we call the paddock is on, runs along the southern border of the property, to the west. Those would be no longer required to be re, re-made available for parking spaces.
Right. And the seven spaces that you're now talking about approving, do those spaces exist or only, or does what exists is the right?
Yeah, we're not, I, I, I know it might be a quibble, but we're not approving the seven spaces. The, the seven spaces are already there where we would be approving the elimination of the other 11. They are designated, I don't know if you can see this.
I saw it before.
Oh, you did? Okay. So there's three in the garage and one, uh, there's three, uh, that are directly opposite the Myers', uh, Meyer house. And then there's, uh, another four with three of them in the garage and one adjacent.
Right. And so those three that are, um, in proximity to the Myers' house, do they currently exist?
They're marked, they're supposed to, they're, they're marked according to the condition, they have to be marked on the ground. I don't, it, so maybe Skylar, can you answer that more directly?
Which hedges are in question?
No, the, the three parking spaces, five, six, and seven. Do those? Yeah, Chris is going to put it back up. So Bruce, just as a reminder, condition four, which I read earlier and, and your, like, your excuse for not retaining this is, but five, six, and seven shall not be paved and may remain grass.
Yeah.
They'll be marked on the ground or by signage which shall be installed with reasonable promptness after the trees have been transplanted.
Yeah, um, I must admit that, uh, that has remained grass. Nothing will change. I guess what's the, what's the question?
Uh, and then there was a seventh, uh, spot next to the garage. Is that right?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, that's spot number four.
Yeah.
That's here and.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. That's number one, maybe.
That, will that change or is that already a spot?
That's all, that's an available spot, but I don't know whether it's grass or paving.
It's grass.
And will it remain grass?
Yeah.
Okay. My point was if these things are to not be grass, but to become gravel or paved or some other form of, uh, parking space, and it's a conditional use, that to me means it's being approved because of the use of the building. And my understanding is that these approvals run with the land, not the owner. And if the, uh, ownership of the property changes and if the use of the property changes, it seems to me that the, uh, now conditionally approved parking be put back into its original state. If it's all gonna be lawn, uh, then that's fine. It's, it's, it's gonna be in its original state right along. But do you see my point?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a, it's a, it's not quite right from, uh, legal perspective and in that, what a conditional use is that it's not permitted by rights. Not a, you're not automatically entitled to a conditional use and zoning means that this type of use, which are, there's a, there's a list of conditional uses for each site, this type of use may work in the zone with condition. So, uh, at the, at the time of the previous approvals, it was, it went from a community facility residence slash office. That was the original conditional use to a community facility use. That was the, that was a change. Prior to Terrasum, it was a residential property and that's, that's a, uh, what's called a, a by right use. So, um, if the use were to change, if Terrasum were to sell the property, then the new, then the, the use, if it were a conditional use under the regs at the time, would determine they'd have to get approval for that. I don't know if that helps, but.
It'd have to get approval for a different use of the building.
Yes, it depends on whether it's a conditional use for that district or not. If it's a, if they were to go to, uh, or to convert to a residential property, uh, that's in a, that's an appeal by, that's a by right use. They wouldn't need approval for that. You only need approval for conditional uses which are listed in each zone. Each zone has different per, potentially permissible conditional uses is the way to think about it.
Kevin?
Yeah, Pete.
Could I, just, just a comment because it's like really late and I need to eat dinner. So I wanted to pick.
You're not the only one.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, that I think the parking, you know, in the front portion of the property is not at issue. I think the question was the parking in the paddock. And, you know, I don't know what the new laws are, the regulations, I get it. If there's reduced parking and that's fine, you know, Sky, um, and I have, you know, talked about this back and forth. We've been good neighbors. We're trying to continue to be good neighbors. You know, Kate and I are neighbors, residents, taxpayers concerned about that, but we're also landscape architects and planners for 30 years. So we're looking to protect what might come in Bristol and we're not going to live in this house forever. So, um, you know, the, that back paddock, the solar array is probably going to go in. We would love to see some protection, some hedges or something that might help people who are going to live here next to not have to look at 90 feet of metal. And Harold, our friend Harold. And, um, the other thing is that, you know, the, the, the parking is what it is. Um, it was always meant to be grass parking. That was always the condition. They agreed to that. We agreed to that. I think that makes great sense. And so, um, you know, while this whole process has been so convoluted, Zoom calls are convoluted, very hard to follow everybody. I appreciate everybody trying to make the best of it. We want to make the best of it. We want to work with our neighbors, Sky and everybody. And I hope that they want to work with us and not just us, but everybody. So that's my end and I'm going to eat.
Yep. Well, so thanks, Peter. And I agree, I echo your thoughts about, uh, you know, how, how people have handled this particular meeting. I really appreciate everyone's been respectful and waited their turn and done the best we could do with Zoom, which isn't easy. So the existing condition, just to say again, is that five, six, and seven shall not be paved. So that condition stands.
Yeah, there's no plan to pave, no desire to pave.
Yeah, well, it's, it's also mandated that.
Sorry.
So, um, and, and that, and, and any, and there's no change to five, six, and seven before us. So.
That's what I mean is it's never even been mentioned or, because you're telling me and I'm, I'm saying it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, but.
Yes, it is mandated.
Any, correct, under the current permit. Any other comments or questions?
Just one other quick question, um, is that, um, I know the original plan had the parking spaces in the paddock and there is a backup septic at the very, west end of the property near the high school. And.
Yeah, there's.
Know that if there has been a plan shown that, uh, respects this, the new sep, uh, the new solar field with respect to where this, backup septic might go. And if the parking is eliminated, that's irrelevant, but the setbacks and the septic and all that. So I would assume that there's some plan that shows all that, that we can just all be assured that it all works.
Yeah, you're correct, Peter, that I see on the, Lincoln Applied Geology Plan, Phase Two, uh, there's a replacement area for septic designated, uh, by dotted lines, uh, that is west of the westernmost parking spot in the, in the paddock area and therefore the westernmost spot that would be eliminated under the, uh, proposed amendment.
There, there's no proposal to change any aspect of that. That remains as is.
And so I guess just general question, and this is not being antagonistic. Is there a plan that shows where the solar is with respect to that, that, that can still happen?
Yeah, that's off limits. I'm sorry, Peter. The solar, the solar has already been approved by the PUC. I'm not going into that.
So. Okay. Well, if, if the backup septic or replacement septic doesn't work, is that an issue? I guess that's.
I'm telling you, there's no change in the plans for backup septic. If, if we were to make a change in the plans for backup septic, we would have to come into conditioning this term.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, jurisdiction does get split up on these things. The, uh, replacement area is there, I'm assuming because it's required by the existing wastewater permit, uh, which we, we, the zoning board don't have anything to do with, but the state of Vermont does. And as a general rule, uh, you, you can't go putting things in the replacement area without violating your wastewater permit. Otherwise, because then it's not a, it's not a replacement area anymore if you, if you disturb it. So it, it's there, I gotta believe, uh, because it's required by the wastewater permit, which, which I, we don't have, but that's a District Nine DEC permit.
And just so you all know, I remember discussing this with Steve Irrell back then. When I discussed this, Steve looked at me and raised his eyebrows and Steve can do it. Said, we're talking about septic in Bristol soils, which is that ever a problem?
It perks.
There's a reserve there because the state said there had to be, but likelihood of it being needed according to Steve is pretty low.
Right. But I gotta believe it's there because the wastewater permit requires it.
Yeah. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Desmond briefly.
Sure.
And to the other concern raised about looking at 90 feet of metal and we want to hedge so that nobody, Mr. Masterson or anybody else has to look at 90 feet of metal. When we're talking about screening, so nobody can see the 90 feet of metal, you're talking about screening so you don't see the solar, which is off the table. The only screening that's permissible for you to review is screening of parking. Screening of the solar was addressed by the Public Utility Commission in their order.
I, yeah, I guess, I guess, Jim, it is a neighborly issue. It is an issue of consideration to neighbors, neighborhoods, view corridors. We, you know, from Harold's house in Church Street, you can see the Catholic church, the Baptist church, Houghton Hall, the post office, you know, they don't live here, I guess that doesn't matter to them, but to people who do live here and who see those things, it's, it's of enormous consequence. And from the green, you know, Fourth of July, we, the vision will be the panels all the way across. And it's, I, I agree. The legality is what it is. The neighborly aspect of it is what it is. That's all we're, that's all we are hoping for as Bristol residents is respect for people in Bristol and how we, um, deal with issues like this, which are advanced beyond the regulation of how we deal with it.
And just so you know, Peter, and you probably know this already, it's because those concerns have tended to block solar all across the state. The legislature passed the law that they passed. That's the reality.
Right. And I'm, I'm not a lawyer.
That we have, that we do have a climate crisis and one small contribution.
Right, right, right. But it's, 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 it's not about the merits of solar and you know that. We love solar. It has nothing to do with that. It's just about how we live as a community, how we respect each other, how we respect things like view corridors and border lines and all that kind of stuff. None of this is going to make any difference in this discussion, but I think it's nice that everybody's contributing. None of this is going to make any difference in this discussion, but I think it's nice that everybody's contributing. People are giving their views and at some point we will, you know, remember when we had those huge dish satellite dish things for TVs? And now we don't. We'll get there, but it's important to have the discussion and to be respectful.
Agreed.
And we do have a commitment articulated from the applicant to install the hedge that may, may well in fact already be required by the, the phase two site plan. I can't, I just can't tell. So whether it's already required, if it's required and not put in, still required. Regardless, solar doesn't take that off the table. But it's kind of a, it seems like it's a moot point because we have a acknowledgement of their willingness to install head, hedge along the, the hedge that was originally contemplated along the, the property's northern border. As I understand it. Skylar.
Question. Um, I guess.
Only when squares you keep moving around.
I guess in installing the hedge, because I will likely be the person digging it in. Are we talking about putting this hedge right up against the array or am I putting it on the border of the property? I mean, the site plan says like on that edge, it seems like it would make sense to screen the back of the panels. You know, now it's kind of another question.
Well, I'm actually, I can read, I'm looking more closely. I can read the existing site plan. And it, and what it says is there's an existing arborvitae hedge noted on the, on the northern property line.
That is there.
About a third of the way in from the, along the length of the paddock parking areas. So that's, but it's, it's on the northern line. And as you go further west, there is on the northern property line, there's an existing 20 inch maple. And then I see designated, proposed two blocks of proposed arborvitae hedge on the northern property line.
Yeah, I'm, okay, so by this I would put it on that northern edge and, and not screen the backside of the panels. Because I, I guess. Or am I doing both?
Scott, you're doing what it says in the plans.
Okay, okay, I'm following the plan.
You're doing what it says in the plans.
Got it.
Right. And, and, and that's, that's actually the approved plan. And, and I don't see the elimination of parking spaces has anything to do with that requirement to install those hedges.
So what's in those plans, we're doing. If there's any reason to change them, we come back before the zoning board.
Got it.
Any, Carol? Any further comments or questions? We're, we're down to, we're down to 12 people. Go ahead, Peter.
You're muted, Peter.
Pete, you're muted.
Okay.
Here you are. Now we hear you. Go ahead.
Sorry, it was clarification. I think what Sky was saying is that I, I'm not sure if I understood him. But yes, the understanding was that the screening would occur on the property line, not like right up to the hedges. I'm not sure if that's what you're saying, Sky, but that was the understanding that because there was going to be parking, it would occur on the property line and not like to be pushed up right against the hedge, if I understood what you were questioning.
Against the solar panels.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be on the property line.
Okay, that's where I'm going to put it. My understanding is just like screening would be like multiple feet away from the array. And then the array just like totally disappears.
Well, you know, look, look at, look at the.
Yeah, I'm following the plan. I'm going to follow the plan.
You're going to follow the plans, Scott.
I'm going to follow the plan.
We're also going to be here till one in the morning.
Yeah.
Charlie. Anyone else with a question? Charlie Weaver. Carol, no?
No.
All right, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the amendment of the existing conditional use permit to eliminate the 11 parking spaces requirement of the paddock area. Have a second?
Hi, yeah.
Seconded.
Okay.
Any, any discussion?
Can you put something in the motion about that this is a civic use and that this will, what? Account for one employee and 24 seats?
Well.
Things, things keeps changing, as you can see from when you read the other. And it would be good if it had a reasoning behind it. We're not just being not just saying poof, the way goes the parking spaces.
The, the decisions, please state the reasoning, Brenda, not the motion.
So it will be in there?
I don't know what it is.
The, the explanation of, of why.
Yes. Has to have findings of fact and conclusions of law. They always do.
Okay.
And it's already in your minutes, or it's about to be in your minutes too.
Right, but, but this is going to actually amend, this decision would, if approved, would amend the conditional use, the existing conditional use approval. And one of the bases therefore is because the amount of parking required under the current regulations is, is satisfied by the remaining seven. That's one of the conclusions. Any other questions or, oh, someone? Any other quest, questions or comments from the board before we vote? Does everybody have the motion in mind? All right, all those in favor? Carol?
Hi.
Brenda?
Yes.
Ted? I vote yes for, oh, we approve the amendment to eliminate the 11 spaces in the paddock area. That concludes, we'll, I'll get a written decision out on that. And I guess that's it. Anything further? Jim, do you see anything further?
Thank you, all of you for your good faith and hard work.
Thanks very much, everyone. Good night. Dinner's cold. I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what I'm having.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Take care. Thanks for everyone for handling a difficult situation very.
Does everyone realize that the zoning board may soon disappear?
We'd be a DRB. So that's, that's just, that's not any.
It's going to disappear.
You can't disappear. DBA for life.
It's a new name.
That's right.
And more work, lots more work.
Yes, lots more work. Okay.
So you need more members.
Good night, folks. Thanks very much. Good night, Jim. Good night, Sky. Gang, take care.